You don't know who you're telling.
How are you? Thank you, well, I apologize. Yes and no? Sounds gross. How are you? Hey, you always say, um, I'm not going to touch anything. Why? Thank you.
For at least an hour.
How about the whole meeting?
An hour and ten minutes. I have something palatable. Oh, okay. Well, I'm not cheerful. And that's better than you. But you gotta be a piece first. That's the first. Oh, okay. I guess I'll sign that.
Good luck there.
Yeah. Always good luck. He was playing dirt on the baseball field. Yeah, yeah, he's following. He still does, but it's, he's gonna graduate this year. Yeah, close to it, I think. For a while now. Yeah, he, he fell in love and I haven't seen him since.
Do you know who that is?
No.
I'm Pam and Nathan Knights.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Their daughter.
Okay. Yeah. Well, when you're my age, everybody has.
There you are. There we are, almost seven o'clock.
You folks ready to go on the right? It's okay, you got four seconds.
Take your time and hurry up a little.
Yeah, yeah. Good to go?
Yes, sir.
There you go, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to call this, um, meeting, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, meeting of the Rockham County School Board to order. Welcome to all of you here. This feels a little bit like Church Mr. Cross, everybody's in the back. So, uh, but anyway, welcome to you all here this evening. The first item that we need to take care of is approval of tonight's agenda, and I will entertain a motion in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Folk, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is four-oh, and I guess I should mention, for those of you who don't know, that Mrs. Lorr and Dr. Schickel are with the FFAers at National Convention. So, that's the reason we have Dr. Shiflett with us tonight, and that we do not have Mrs. Lorr or Dr. Schickel. At this time, I'd like to ask that you please stand, as you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I would invite you to join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, we will move into recognitions and presentations, and school recognitions, and, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Dr. Shiflett, Chairman Breeden, school board members, and all in attendance, welcome to Wilbur S. Pence Middle School. Before I turn this over to the people that really do all the heavy lifting here in the school, I just want to take a minute, for those of you that don't know me, I'm John Childs. I'm privileged to be the principal here at Wilbur Pence Middle School. First, I do want to let you know that we are very proud of the hard-working and dedicated faculty and staff who work diligently at Wilbur Pence each and every day to create an environment where we embrace, empower, enrich, and inspire our knights. We are thankful for the support from our central office staff and our school board to help improve the middle school experience through supporting staffing, which facilitates a teaming approach, through addressing student needs through our tiered system of supports, and for working to improve school safety with the addition of a school resource officer. These are all things that have been supported by you all over the last year and a half, and we appreciate it. As a matter of fact, our new resource officer, who just started last week, is in the back, Andrew Custer, who is with us full-time, and we're proud to have Andrew here. Finally, I would like to recognize two very special ladies who work tirelessly for the school and for the love of our students. Teresa Shank and Candace Ray, please stand up. For those of you that are not aware, I started out on family and medical leave, starting on August third. I had an event and, um, had to have open-heart surgery. Being an administrator is challenging with the three of us. It's challenging for the two of them to keep me in line while I'm here. But while I was out, I would like to publicly thank them and recognize them for their work, not only for Pence, but for the support that they have personally given me. They are not only my colleagues, but they are two of my very best friends, and I do love them dearly, so please give them a hand. And since they have done most of the work to this point, I am turning it over to them.
Well, I have the easy part of all of this, because I get to do the school recognitions. So, I'm gonna start off recognizing our students for today, tonight, and I'm gonna start off with Leila, 'cause I know that there is a very important football game going on right now. And even though we, we don't want to diminish her importance, because we think she's absolutely amazing, we do know that they are, are splitting their time. So, um, our first Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Count Award goes to Ms. Leila Shank. Leila is always kind to others, willing to help whenever you ask. She strives to be the best version of herself in class, in athletics, and in clubs. She has a positive attitude and enjoys helping peers, teachers, and younger students and athletes. Leila hel-, or leads by example with how she positively treats her classmates, works hard, and helps others whenever an opportunity arises. Congratulations, Leila, and thank you for being such a good role model for other students to follow. And by the way, I get this question a lot. No, Leila is not my daughter, though I would proudly claim her any day. She is the daughter of Josh and Sarah Shank.
Well, Leila, congratulations. And who is here with you this evening? Well, why don't you have them come on down?
I will take pictures for you.
Mm, there you go. Well, you know that you have a wonderful daughter, now everybody knows you have a wonderful daughter. And in the introduction, I heard the word kindness and kind, that you're kind. So, I have a quote from Princess Diana, and she said, "Carry out a random act of kindness with no expectation of reward, safe in the knowledge that one day someone might do the same for you." Is that why you're kind all the time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, this is a very special evening, and I'm going to give you the, probably, the part that you'll enjoy the most, and that's a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. And a pin to wear. And I'm gonna give this to mom, because I'd like mom to hang this in the house somewhere, in a very special place. Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations.
And we're super proud of her, too. Um, our next recipient of the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Count Award for two thousand twenty-two is Ben Hoover. And Ben's teachers, um, describe him as the, as such. Ben is always a bright light, shining for all to see in the hallways. He is kind and friendly to everyone. He is always ready to say hello and give a fist bump. Ben goes out of his way to acknowledge others. In fact, whoever's the first person in the building gets asked the question, "When's Mr., when's Mr. Childs gonna be here? When's Ms. Ray gonna be here?" As soon as he sees you, he wants to know when you're getting here. He makes a point to always be polite and respectful to others, adults and students. He is such a hard worker, even when the task is challenging. We cannot think of someone who deserves character counts as much as Ben. Congratulations, Ben. We appreciate you and the positive outlook that we share with others. And Ben is the son of Roger and Jill Hoover.
All right, you're ready? You want your mom and dad to come down? Yes. This way, this way. Okay. Okay, I got it. Do you want to come on over here? Thank you, thank you, Ben. And who's this?
My mom.
Oh, how are you? Mr. and Mrs. Hoover, your first name is?
Jill.
Jill, and you are?
Roger.
Roger, oh, so wonderful that, that you're here this evening with Ben, and he certainly is very deserving of this award. And just for everybody to know, what character counts we espouse in this school division, we have six character counts. Caring, citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness. And also, when Ms. Shank was reading the, the words about you, Ben, she used the word kind again. So, I have a kind quote for you. And this is said by the Fourteenth Dalai Lama. "Be kind whenever possible, it is always possible." And I know with you, Ben, it's always possible. I'm gonna give you another fist bump. And we thank you all for being here to watch as Ben receives the Klein Dairy Bar certificate. You're welcome. And the pin, and of course, I'm gonna give this to mom, so she can hang it in, somewhere in your home where everybody could look at it.
Thank you.
And then our final recognition tonight is the Volunteer of the Year here at Pence. Jennifer Hildebrand is our Volunteer of the Year. Jennifer is our PTO Hospitality Committee Chair. She has done a fantastic job organizing meals, incentives, and other supports for our faculty, staff, and students. And I can say without a doubt that anytime I email her, I immediately get a response back, and it's always a, "What do you need? How can I help you?" And she starts immediately planning, and for some reason, she can just make things happen in a snap. So, um, I, I for one am especially grateful to her, because usually, as soon as I email, she makes it happen. So, Jennifer, come on down, thank you so much.
Hello, Jennifer.
Hi.
Who's here with you this evening?
I have my husband, Ryan, and my two daughters, Audrey and Clara, and some friends here.
Well, they could stand up, or they could come down. Whichever they choose.
Okay. There we go.
Oh, we love it. Good. Hi, guys. Hi, Ryan.
Yeah, you know my husband.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Oh, my goodness, this is wonderful. We are thrilled that you have been selected as the volunteer for Pence Middle School. And you also have a Klein Dairy Bar certificate. And I hope, I'm gonna give this to Ryan so that he can hang it in the house for you to look at and for everyone to look at. I know you're proud of your mom, and you should be. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next thing I'm gonna do, and then you won't have to listen to me anymore, is I want to introduce you to someone super special here at Pence. If you walked into our doors, if you took a turn around all of our beautiful artwork as you came in, that was a collection of all the fabulous things that happened here at Pence with our art students. I have to be honest with you, our entire music, just group of people for fine arts is just amazing. And our students just do so many wonderful things. But Mimi is a huge part of that. She does great things with the art at Pence, and art is popular here at Pence. And if you got to take just a minute to look at that, that's all Mimi working for students to make it happen. So, I'm gonna hand it over to her now and let her take a minute to just talk to you about art at Pence.
Hi, I am Mimi Guido. I am the art teacher here at Wilbur Pence. This is my third year teaching here, and I've loved every moment of it, the fine arts. It's such a wonderful environment here, and all the teachers are so talented, and the kids are so amazing and sweet and kind. This is also my eighth year teaching in Rockingham County, so you may have seen me at some of the elementary schools. But I moved to Wilbur Pence in 2020. So, it was really fun to get to know the students in person last year and be able to form a connection. Up on display is a variety of art pieces made by our talented artists. And I asked 7th and 8th grade to pick out one of their favorite pieces they've made so far this year. And this ranges anywhere from their identity maps that tells a story about them, or we also have some surreal monochromatic paintings. If you see a lot of dragons and kind of out-of-this-world imagery, that's what that is. And then for my 6th graders, it's the end of our first rotation. And I let them use clay, which was an awesome, wonderful privilege to be able to use clay and have a kiln here. And you'll see some clay that's finished being glazed, and then some other pieces that kind of have a matte finish that aren't quite done yet. But all I want to say, thanks to having a great administration for helping support me, and you guys for also supporting the arts. It's very important. And I know the kids here in the county love it. I also want to say that, again, I'm just really grateful for this group of kids that I get to work with. They are very creative. And you can tell in each one of those pieces, they all have such a personality, and they aren't afraid to show it. So, it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mimi. So, I wanted to share just a couple quick things with you. The first thing that I wanted to mention to you this evening is that Pence is excited to offer club soccer for the second year in a row. Every Monday and Thursday for about six weeks in the fall, we have over 100 students in 8th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. And that number has grown since we started the program last year. But they spend about an hour after school just being active and building community around their shared interest of soccer. Club soccer focuses on building essential skills for the game, as well as helping students make positive peer connections, all while they're having fun and experiencing a little healthy competition. We're very fortunate to have several Pence teachers and staff members that also have a vested interest in club soccer, as well as our kids, of course. Club soccer is yet another great way for our students to connect with each other, our staff, and our school. As you know, soccer, or football, as most of the world refers to it, is likely one of the most popular sports worldwide. And so, we do feel that our program has allowed us at Pence to draw in students from a variety of backgrounds and cultures to create an environment where our children are building positive connections with our school. And speaking of building those positive connections, we want to share a little bit about the climate and culture that we strive to build here at Pence Middle each day. Our goal is always for all of our students to feel like they're valued and that they belong here at school with us. We do believe that all means all and that we are better together. Our students hear this message on a daily basis from their teachers, their administrators, ladies in the cafeteria, everybody. Our school motto this year is "Pence Tough," which is an acronym for "Together, Our Unity Grows Higher." And at Pence, our staff is empowered to learn about our students as individuals, their interests, their struggles, to make meaningful connections with our students, and to build positive nurturing relationships with them. We strive to find meaningful support systems, and we strive to build each other up every day. We teach and encourage kindness here at Pence. We also teach that our differences make us unique, but our acceptance brings us together and makes us better. And this evening, I'm gonna invite Ms. Schank to come back up. We just wanted to share with you the message that we share with our students and staff at the end of every single day here at Pence. You are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, smarter than you think, and loved way more than you know. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations again to all the recipients tonight of the Character Counts Awards and for the volunteerism. And thank you all for all the great things you're doing here at Wilbur Pence. Maybe a good time sometime down the road to sort of do a reminder presentation about Brittany and Kelly. Just so folks know, we've been doing that award now for a lot of years, 20-plus. And it would be nice to go back and remind folks of who those fine individuals are. Next, we're going to move into our public comment section. Same rules will apply as always. I will gavel at the 2:30 mark so that you know where you stand with regards to your time without having to watch the clock. We will begin with Michael Stempel.
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Shiflett for being here and listening to what I have to say. I'd like to cover three points tonight. Conservatives often talk about their opposition to big government, but it looks like the Yonkin Department of Education was heavily involved in the selection of Superintendent Mark Taylor in Spotsylvania County, a person with no experience in education. I want to make sure that, ensure that the public knows that there'll be a transparent process here for the selection of superintendent, and there won't be any intervention from the Yonkin Department of Education. Last meeting during public comment, someone talked about the pillars of socio-emotional learning. I had not, I had no idea what they were, but they are. The five pillars: self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. My understanding is a current school board member and a local school board candidate have made clear their public opposition to socio-emotional learning. My question is, why? Why would anyone be opposed to learning self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, or relationship skills? Those seem like things that would be important for a student to learn. And I know that, I know that those things are taught in our RCPS, and I appreciate that. But I'm curious why there's some opposition to that. Also, in the RCPS Core Dialogue Group Report Summary, it was stated that there was wide agreement with this that all students should feel safe, wanted, and welcomed. With this in mind, it is clear that Yonkin's Department Education Model, Proposed Model Policy for transgender students does not achieve that. So, I again, as I have been coming up here, ask the board to reject the model policy as it is harmful to transgender students. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Donald Knight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, board. You know, I've been watching a lot of things, this first school board meeting I ever been in. But I've noticed how many people are tired of seeing your kids going to school and scared to death they're gonna get shot before they get home. It's a lot happening, right? You know why? You know what we done? It's our fault. Right here's what we done. We took the word of God out of the school system because of one lady. Madame O'Hara. She was an atheist and went against the schools having Bibles in them. We took our protection away from the kids. It's our fault. The blood of Jesus Christ Almighty that hung on Calvary and died for us is what protects our children. You look at the generations that's coming up behind my generation. Because when I went to school, and I know a lot of y'all, I don't know how your ages are, I had a Bible teacher. I had Bible study in school. Where did we go wrong? What's going on in our school systems? You want to take the Bibles out but hang a condom machine in my boys' bathrooms and tell them it's all for safe sex? And then you want this telling kindergarteners that, hey, if you don't want to be a boy, I can make you a girl? Come on. There's people right here I know for a fact. Girls getting raped in our own public schools. It happened in Broadway. A lot of people didn't know that. It got hid. But it's time for this trash to stop. God is tired of it. I'm telling you right now. So, I was sent here as a messenger to let you know. This thing better get back in our school systems because we're gonna lose the children. I'm telling you, you look at generations, you look at all these shootings that's coming up. These kids are getting shot because a demon possessed people. It's not the guns doing it. It's the people. And right here is what we took out. We took it away. It's our fault. The blood, I delivered what God had me to deliver here tonight. The blood is on anybody's hands that's gonna fight against it. Because I don't care where I gotta go, who I gotta fight to get this back in the schools to the kids. This is the word. The ladies that done this, you know what they done to them? They took their whole family and killed them, stuffed them in a sack, and hauled them off in a van. Madame O'Hara, look it up. You can look it up through the internet and study what she done. They were some corrupt people. They was after the generational kids. If we lose our kids, we lost it all.
I'm sorry, sir, time?
Thank you.
Next, we will move to highlights by board members. Mr. Falk? Thank you. Dr. McQuillen?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. First of all, I'd like to thank the people from Pence, John Childs, Candace Ray, Teresa Schank. And I see John, I see Candace. Teresa, please express my appreciation to all three of you for your hospitality this evening. We really appreciate the time you took to set everything up, to provide the meal for us. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd also like to recognize the 2022 Economics Educator of the Year for Virginia. The award is given by the Virginia Council on Economic Education. And the winner is Laura Sanderayoh, who teaches 5th grade at Elkton Elementary School. And this is her second state award. So, we are extraordinarily proud of Laura and her students and the work they do for economics education. And my final few words, I'd like you all to take a look every Friday. Katie Lepira puts out something called "Sharing the Gold." And she talks about all the wonderful things that are going on in Rockingham County schools. And I encourage all of you to please take a look at this every Friday. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus?
Get this thing on here. Thanks, everybody coming out tonight. Also, thank you, Ms. Schank and Ms. Ray, for all the work you have put in here at the school. Mr. Childs has been out. Mr. Childs, it's good to have you back. Definitely been in our thoughts and our prayers and continued thoughts and prayers going forward. So, I thank the staff here for everything you guys have done to provide an awesome atmosphere, not only for us but for our students that come inside the school every single day. So, thank you so much. We get a lot of compliments out of Pence Middle School. Also, thank you Deputy Custer as well. It's a dream come true to have you as a full-time SRO here at the middle school. And we appreciate your service to the children. And just, it's awesome to see you here as a full-time SRO. So, we're glad we have you here at Pence Middle School. I do want to say two things because sometimes we can just kind of repeat things that aren't true. To the one gentleman spoke tonight, we don't have condom machines in our locker rooms or here at schools. So, that's not true. And also, the incident, I can't speak on the incident at Broadway High School, but I can say that Ms. Abernathy did a great job there as our administrator. And you always hear things when they come out that these things happen or whatever. And the first thing I said was, just give it time. Give it time to let everything settle. Let's find out. And to come to find out, they did a great job. So, thank you to the administration out at Broadway High School and all that you've done. And sometimes just people say things that they just don't know the whole story about. So, I just wanted to say that tonight because it's not fair when people make accusations that aren't true, and they're not here to back that up. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you. First of all, I too would like to thank John for his hospitality. A bit of a homecoming for me, this is where I began my professional career with Rockingham County Public Schools as a social studies and basketball coach at Pence Middle School. So, it was nice to come back. A few highlights I would like to hit if you would allow me an opportunity. On Tuesday, October 11th, I had the chance to visit the FBLA Exchange at James Madison University. This event was hosted by the JMU Center for Economics Education. And it was a regional event with Rockingham County Public High Schools, Harrisonburg High School, Waynesboro, Stanton. And they brought the students together basically to compete, mix the students together. So, it wasn't just Spotswood students competing against East Rock. There was a smorgasbord. They were working with students from other schools, and they had to solve a problem. Very similar to a Shark Tank episode where they had to compete against each other. So, it's really good. They had to solve a problem trying to promote a community business. And over 150 students attended. And I believe the winning team, it was comprised of a student from East Rock, Spotswood, and Harrisonburg High School. And then on last week, the 18th, I had an opportunity to go to the Fall Rally for the FCC LA students. And that event was sponsored by our Family Consumer Science Teachers in conjunction with Harrisonburg City Public Schools. And over 100 students attended that event. They had an opportunity to visit 10 different stations where they were learning successful skills, such as dressing for success, how to communicate, how to write thank you notes. It was really good to see that, and a huge shout out to the Rockingham County Fairgrounds and Rebecca Holloway for helping us find a space. And also, last week was Bus Driver Safety Week. And I want to give a big shout out to all of our bus drivers out there who get up early every morning, run that route, and then the afternoon. Last, this past Friday, I did a little pinch hitting, so to speak, and I drove a substitute route for Peakview Elementary School. And the kids were absolutely terrific, and they were great. I had a couple of students, older students, sitting by my shoulder, you know, telling me to get your flashing lights on. We gotta stop coming up here, and you gotta turn here. And it was better than GPS. They did a really great job. And then lastly, shout out to Melissa Bentley, our Director of People Personnel Services. This month, October, is Disability History and Awareness Month. And I believe she had an interview with one of our local radio hosts, and that'll be airing this week, so you can learn more about that. But shout out to her, her team, Kara, Chris, Ashley, and Sarah, and all of our special education teachers and paraprofessionals who work with our students every day. So, I wanted to say thanks to all that you do. So, thank you, Chair Breeman, for giving me a moment to share.
Thank you for sharing. I just want to send, first of all, a show of hands to students that are here. Welcome, welcome. We may be a little boring for you tonight, but... We may be a little boring for you tonight, but that's welcome from where I sit. But we're glad to have you here. I just wanted to give another shout out to those students and adults who are heading and probably there now to the National FFA Convention. As somebody who did not grow up on a farm, I can tell you that my experience and the training that I received because I was recruited to join the FFA and take agriculture courses at the middle school level, that experience probably has prepared me more for my professional life than anything that I learned in school, maybe short of being able to read and write. And so, if you've not had an opportunity to look at what those agriculture programs and the FFA has to offer, I would encourage you to do that. And there are so many great opportunities for you to learn parliamentary procedure and public speaking and just management of a business and that sort of thing. So shout out to those folks, good luck to those who are participating. And I know my FFA jacket doesn't come close to fitting anymore, I can say that, too.
I'll second that.
Yeah, right, I'm with you. All right. Thank you all for sharing those highlights. We will move to action items. We do have need to approve the minutes from the last meeting, and I will entertain a motion in that regard if it be your desire.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2022, meeting as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillken. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 4-0. Field trips, Dr. Shiflett.
There are two field trips for your approval. The first one is Broadway High School, the TSA Student Workshop, November the 18th through the 20th, 2002. Eight students to Camp Pidunkatan, Hartford, Virginia. And then the second field trip is Turner Ashby High School, the wrestling team, December the 29th through the 30th, 2022. 16 students to Heritage High School, Lynchburg, Virginia, and I recommend your approval of these two field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, you've heard the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent. Do I hear a motion in support?
I motion in support.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillken. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 4-0 as well. Thank you. Policy revisions, Ms. Williams.
Hold it down for about two seconds. Green light. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Breeden and Dr. Shiflett and school board members. This evening, I'm here to ask for your approval on three policies, the three that were presented to you at the last meeting. FG, Retirement of Facilities. JCA, Transfer Request of Students Who've Been a Victim of Crime. And then CA, Copy of.
Have a recommendation, sir?
I recommend that the school board approve the three policies presented by Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, again, you've heard the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent. Is there a motion in support?
I move that we approve the recommendation regarding the proposed policy revisions as presented by Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillken. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Again, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 4-0. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will move to school board questions, and I'll go in the opposite order, begin with Mr. Kraus.
I just had a few questions tonight. Dr. Shiflett, can you give us an update on our SROs and I believe we have two other grants that we've, another grant out there for two more SROs? Could you give us an update on that?
Yes, currently, we've hired two SROs. One is at Monta Video Middle School, and the other one, we just, was introduced here earlier at Wilbur S. Pence Middle School, and we did get grant funding for two more, and currently, the Sheriff's Office is accepting applications for those two positions.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for that. And I was talking with someone today, and I had a question. Do we have a trauma-informed counselors at all our schools?
Well, we do not have counselors that would have that title, so all of our schools have counselors, and they work with students in various capacities, academic planning, career planning, but many of them have been trained in trauma-informed practices, so they understand that trauma can impact a student and negative, have adverse effects on this child when it comes to academics, when it comes to behaviors, when it comes to emotions. But we don't have specifically at our school counselors that are just hired for trauma-informed. Now, we do have six early intervention clinicians that are hired through CSB, but we fund them through Rockingham County Public Schools, and they work primarily at our four high schools and our four middle schools. Currently, there are six of those. I believe there are three vacancies in those positions, if that's correct, Ms. Bentley.
And are they, are they part-time? Are those from CSB, are they part-time or are they?
They're full-time.
They are? Okay. All right. And the last thing is really not a question. I had asked, I think, two meetings ago about the Narcan, and Dr. Schikele had said that there is a training in May for our school nurses to be able to go to. That way, we could have Narcan inside the schools, especially with all the fentanyl stuff going on around the nation. But could you ask if there's any other avenue that we could look at before May of any type of training for our nurses that could get into? I don't know whether the, first, whether Fire and Rescue offers anything or something somewhere else, I don't know. Just May seems a long way off to get that training. If we could find another avenue to get that training before May, that would be pretty cool to have that accessibility to that, just in case we needed it.
We can explore that option.
Thank you. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Dr. McQuillken.
Pass.
Thank you. Mr. Falk?
Pass.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett?
Pass.
All right. I just wanted to make a brief comment, and it just occurred to me as we were sitting here having discussion. I had the opportunity to foster a young man who came from a home that was trauma-filled. Mother on methamphetamines, a lot of violence in the household, and this young individual, it took what might have been viewed as just disruptive behavior was really that child just trying to sort of settle down from what they were accustomed to being on a high state of alert, if you will, in their environment. And it was just so nice to have these professionals in the schools who recognized that, and we've made leaps and bounds since then. But, you know, this was an individual who, years ago, we would have, we would have seen before the school board for expulsion because of the things that were being identified as discipline problems, were really, once we kind of got through all of the debris, was just a natural response of that, of that young person who was 11 when they came to And so, being able to recognize those signs, I think, is so vital. That individual's now back with their mom, who has been clean for many years, which is a blessing, and is doing well in school, is participating on the wrestling team. But it, I don't know that, I don't know that Karina and I could have handled all of the stuff that, because my age group tends to look at things like, you're just being mean. You're just, you're just being mean. And to have, to have those people there to help us with that, just, there's no price tag to put on that, and that's my own personal testimony about, about those people who are helping to, to get these kids to a point to where they can be educated. So I just thank all of those folks for the hard work that they do. We do have reason this evening to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion in that regard at this time.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2, Chapter 2, Dash 3, 7, 1, 1, A, one personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation, and A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory at-school attendance based on religious beliefs or the inability to benefit from education at the school that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillken. Those motions, for those of you who are here, have to be very specific to apply, to meet criteria for Virginia statute. Dr. Schikele and I have joked privately, if you've, if you've ever heard those car commercials at the end where the guy talks really, really fast and you can't understand everything he's saying, I've been tempted to record that motion and let him speed it up real fast like that, but that would not do it justice, so my sense of humor doesn't always carry over. Okay, all of, all of who are in favor of entering into closed meeting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is 4-0. Thank you, and thank you to all of you. Please be safe on your drive home, and we hope to see you again.